Would you like to call the meeting in the morning? You do have a long call though. Mrs. Elder?
Here.
Mr. Howser?
Here.
Mrs. Posar?
Here.
Mrs. May?
Here.
Mr. Muller? Mr. Music?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Dr. George?
Here.
Dr. Lachlan?
Here.
Thank you. The listener's report?
I have no reports.
Next, we'd like to sit for a moment of silence and remembrance of Mrs. Valerie Dahl, who was a personal assistant at Bagley, and she passed away almost two weeks ago of liver cancer, and she did have three sons that went through the district. Thank you. I have no report for the legislative, the band, the budget. Preliminary one has been put forth by the governor and will be forthcoming through that. Education and planning, Mrs. May?
Thank you.
We'll begin with the student report. The primary report is available.
Hi. On the bottom of the high school report, you'll see that I talk about how spring sports started their main parade practice. And before I started, I wanted to make sure that you all knew that I'm so happy we had a school board meeting because I got all the proper practice and the pouring down rain. I got to leave early, so. Anyway, this Saturday and Sunday, March 13th and 14th, the Senior High Musical is going to take place, and musical this year is Gospel. It's based on the Gospel of Mark, and it's a story about community, personal connections, and love. And if anyone's interested in placing orders for tickets, you can stop by Mr. Crack's room, or you can call 724-539-4298. And pre-sale tickets are done tomorrow, but you can buy tickets at the door as well. Also, on Friday, the Senior High will celebrate Pi Day, and the CFC and the math department sold Pi Day t-shirts when we take each math class to the CFC to listen to a panel of various speakers talk about how math is used in the real world. And this year, it's called Super Pi Day because the first five numbers in pi are 3.1415. And also, on February 27th, we had Pull-a-Kalooza. It was pushed back a week because of the weather. And the team that won was Team East, and it was a team of senior boys, Josh Berchuk, Chad Kissel, Mario Fanning, Nick Aiello, Evan Kep, and Trey Buggoff. It was a lot of fun, and it was a lot of success, and we wanted to thank all the community places that businesses that donated for us because they helped us make a huge success.
Good evening. I want to talk about the Rock and Read-a-Thon from Bagley Elementary School. The Rock and Read-a-Thon occurred from February 16th to the 27th. Over the course of the two weeks, the principal would announce throughout the day, once a day, it's either rock or read, and the students were either dancing, whatever, or read. And then from there, the students were also given recording sheets to take home and keep track of the number of minutes they read at home. The results were posted in the lobby back home room in grade level. Over 100,000 minutes were read by the children at Bagley Elementary School. And also, there was a talent show held during that period at Bagley, and the Rock and Read-a-Thon ended last Friday with Family Fun Night. It was attended by a good bit of families.
Thank you very much. No other report, Mr. Brown, can I comment on the moment report?
No, I don't have any comment on the moment report, but I would note that we did have kindergarten registration here at the Center for Student Creativity last Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, so we're starting to get our first glimpse at kindergarten numbers for next year. So I would just encourage any family of a child who will be five on or before August 31st, 2015, to please visit our website at glsd.us and complete the online registration form so that we can get you scheduled for kindergarten screening, which will occur at the end of this month. Hopefully the newspapers.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Now I'll turn it over to Dr. Pepper to introduce the. I'd like to introduce Ms. Kim Harreto, who is the principal at our Bagley Elementary School, along with two of her teachers who are doing a presentation pertaining to Tier Two interventions. I think we need to move, right? Good evening. One years ago, when I taught math, I used to talk to little students and compare learning math with building a house. And I would talk a lot about having a solid base or solid foundation so that you could continue to build a strong house above it. And I related that to math, with you needed to have a strong base, you needed to have strong number sense, you needed to know why you were doing what you were doing in math. So the more advanced you became in math with your classes, the stronger you were. If you were missing blocks or bricks, your house that you were building became weaker, and it started to struggle. And that same analogy goes for teaching reading instruction. If a student does not have the base to decode words, they struggle reading sentences, they struggle reading poems, short stories, novels. The more advanced you get as a reader, the more you struggle. As educators, our job is to replace those bricks, those blocks, for those students so that their reading house is strong. And we're here tonight as a Bagley team to talk with you about the Tier Two Elementary ELA interventions. And I have with me tonight Heather Chambers. Heather is our reading specialist. And Melissa Wisneski, who is not only a kindergarten teacher in our building, she is also our ELA teacher leader. Bagley Elementary School and Lake Trippe Elementary School are what's considered a school-wide Title I school. While Mountain View is not considered a Title I school, the services and supports that they receive are the same, but they're supported by reading specialists and classroom assistants. The emphasis of a school-wide Title I program is on serving all students and combining all resources to achieve a common goal. That common goal for us is to have all students proficient in ELA or English language arts, so that we can use ELA. How do we accomplish this common goal? We accomplish this common goal through the RTII process. Through this process, any student displaying a deficit in any reading area will receive additional support to help that student become proficient. Basically, we are replacing their missing blocks and their foundation. The support that we offer is flexible, and it's administered by classroom teachers and interventionists. And when I say interventionist, I'm meaning reading specialist, AmeriCorps tutors, classroom assistants, learning support teachers. All of those people are interventionists in our buildings. The RTII process consists of three tiers. Tier One students are successful in making progress in our Core Reading Program, which is our Storytown program. Within that program, we do have Core Interventions, which are administered through differentiated instruction within the regular classroom. At Bagley Elementary, right now, we have 467 students considered Tier One students. They are receiving that Core Instruction within the classroom. That's approximately 78% of our student population. 116 of our students at Bagley are considered Tier Two students or receiving Tier Two interventions. Not only are those students receiving the Core Instruction in Storytown, but they are also getting skill group interventions. And those are the interventions that we're going to talk with you about tonight and share what they look like. Students who go into Tier Two don't remain in Tier Two forever. It's not a life sentence. It is flexible. These students, once they receive the intervention, if they respond to the intervention and start to show progress, can return to Tier One instruction. Some students may not respond to those interventions. And we do have 13 students at Bagley Elementary School who are in the Tier Three interventions, and those interventions were shared with you last month with Mrs. Pallas and her team from Mountain View. Like I said, this evening, I'd like to focus on those 116 students at Bagley Elementary School who are receiving Tier Two interventions. We determine what students qualify for Tier Two interventions by using the DIBBLES assessment. Okay? The DIBBLES assessment is administered three times a year, beginning, middle, and end. DIBBLES allows us to identify students who are not fluent readers. If a student does not meet their grade level benchmark, then we know that their reading is not fluent or automatic. Fluency, no matter what anybody tells you, is not a race against the clock. It's about how automatic reading the words is for a student. Research shows that fluency is directly related to comprehension. If a reader spends a significant amount of time attempting to decode the words in the text, the meaning behind what the author is trying to say is lost. So the DIBBLES assessment red flags those students for us that are not fluent readers. It is our job as educators to determine what's prohibiting them from being a fluent reader. And you will see, we have what's called the Purple Folder. Any student who is a Level, or is a Tier Two student, we create a Purple Folder for them. The Purple Folder houses their data and what we use to make instructional decisions. You will see in the middle, it is called the Choraphonic Survey. And what that is, is our diagnostic assessment that we administer to students who don't reach that benchmark, that fluency benchmark. And we use that assessment to identify their skill deficits. We identify their skill deficits, and then we group them according to those skills, and we assign them to an interventionist or a classroom teacher for that skill work using the interventions that we're going to show you tonight. Okay? Please keep in mind that a student will not see or use every intervention that we show you this evening. Some students may only see one intervention, be in that intervention for a short amount of time, and then return to Tier One because we have replaced their work. Also, in the Purple Folder, we have something called the San Diego Quick Assessment. This assessment is administered to simply determine their instructional level so that we know what level to monitor their progress, or progress monitor them on, and notice the bullet is on the far left. As I said, the Tier One program is the Storytown program, but we are going to focus on the Tier Two programs this evening, which is the Storytown, the skill groups, and interventions. The interventions that we are going to share with you and describe tonight are the Intensive Intervention Kit, which goes with our Storytown program, the Language Toolkit, West Virginia Phonics, Rewards, and Read Live. And last month, you were exposed to Read Well and Language. So I would like to introduce to you Melissa Wisneski, who's going to talk with you about the Storytown Intensive Intervention Kit.
Hey, everybody. You know, reading is such a complex process, and we use this map throughout the presentation. You'll see it with a number of interventions. And each intervention presents a different skill that we are using to help our children with different deficits. You know, we look at the left side of the oval, and we're looking at understanding of text and reading for meaning, construction of thought processes during reading, comprehension, the interaction between written words and how it activates prior knowledge, and meaning of text and vocabulary. On the right side, we have more of decoding, which looks at phonemic awareness, which would be the manipulation of sounds and words. I always like to tell my parents when I talk about phonemic awareness that you can do phonemic awareness without your eyes, you only need your ears. And that, to me, is one of the differences between phonemic awareness and phonics. Phonemic awareness includes things like breaking words apart in the syllables, hearing, beginning, middle, and ending sounds, segmentation of words, phoneme isolation, substitution, deletion. Phonics is using your eyes, it's understanding the correspondence between sounds and spelling patterns, decoding, blending, and using those spelling patterns, spelling patterns such as short vowels, long vowels, syllables, diphthongs, vowel and consonant diagrams, multi-syllabic words, and so forth. If you look up here in Storytown, the Intervention Kit, it addresses all of that. It is aligned with our Storytown Reading Program, and we use it as a way, once we are able to identify those deficits, we use it to specifically address what the student needs help with. So we have areas in phonemic awareness, decoding, phonics, fluency, and comprehension as well. I would like to say that each lesson sequence in the Intensive Kit is specific to the skills that they all look differently, but the Storytown Intensive Kit is very effective in the sense that it covers all of the skills that you need to read.
Heather will now talk with you about the Language Toolkit.
Okay, the Language Toolkit is an intervention that we use with the primary students, and if you notice, that's why we're mainly looking at the right side, because we're developing the phonemic awareness and the decoding and working towards that fluent reading. So you won't see the vocabulary and comprehension piece over there right now. We do have a lesson sequence for this one. These are materials that we use. We have word card, letter cards, and then we always add a reading piece. And I would like to say that no matter what intervention we use, even if the reading piece is not built in our curriculum, we always do that through the application piece. So even if it's just mainly focusing on reading for phonics, we add that reading piece so that we get comprehension and vocabulary as well in the reading piece. So keep this visual in mind as I go through the lesson sequence. The first thing that we do is the Toolkit visual, and we have cards, and we just literally flip the cards and ask them to tell us the letter sounds. Then we have a blending drill, and that's where we lay each card out, which is on a previous slide. And we want them to go "act" and then blend it out into a cat. Then we have what's called an auditory drill, and that's where we will say a sound, like "app," and they have to write their sentence. Then they have to read it back to us. The same thing happens with reading words. We will dictate a word, they have to spell it, then they have to read down through their list of words at the end. Then we have a segmentation that they do as well, and they'll read it back to us. And then there's that reading piece, the word reading for phonics. And we'll discuss the vocabulary in a moment, please.
The West Virginia Phonics Intervention is also an intervention that addresses phonics deficits. It's very explicit phonics instruction, and you can see once again that it is helping students that might have trouble with phonemic awareness, phonics, decoding, ultimately helping to improve their fluency. A daily sequence for the West Virginia Phonics includes a warm-up activity. This is sometimes sight work, cards, it's usually a review for the student. The phonological awareness and articulation of skill includes a phonemic awareness, that manipulation of sound and words, practice. And the students will frequently use a mirror to look at the way that they're mouthing, that would be their articulation of skill, to make sure that they are using their mouth in the correct way to make the sound into letter words. The letter sound correspondence are usually done with cards, and it helps them to identify they're starting to practice some of those spelling patterns. The word reading and blending routines, that's a modeled and scaffolding blending routine with the students. The teacher does a lot of modeling, showing them how to blend those sounds to make the words, and the students are practicing sound by sound to make those words similar to what Heather said when she showed you the example of the cat, the consonant, consonant, where it's C-E-A-T. Word work, this would be building words, using a lot of substitution to practice encoding words, using the same phonics patterns throughout so that they're practicing that over and over again. Dictation, where the teacher will ask them or state the words, and the students have to write them with a spelling pattern. And then again, as Heather said, there's always that text application where they are applying what they've learned into reading a text.
Okay, this one is called Rewards. It is a multi-syllabic intervention for the older students, as you see on the bottom where it says 3, 4, 5, 6. So you will see that piece again, of course, just phonemic awareness, the decoding, going into that fluent reading. It's not going to get yet into vocabulary or comprehension either, it is just a multi-syllabic phonics intervention for the older students. The lesson sequence then has a lot of similar things that the West Virginia Phonics and the Language Toolkit had. There are blending sounds, you're going to be reading vowel combinations, pronouncing those. But again, this one will be more looking at syllables, going further into the words, frequencies, and suffixes, so that they can decode the multi-syllabic words. This program is called Read Live. Now this one is from grades four to six as well, and this is our fluency. It has a piece of vocabulary comprehension in it as well. It is a computer-based program, and they go with vocabulary comprehension and our fluency. At this point, we have phonemic awareness and phonics up because they should be in place by now. This is a daily lesson sequence. They select a story, vocabulary comes in with the key words, they need to make a prediction that they only have about two minutes to do. Then the teacher does what's called a cold timing on the student. We listen, we mark mistakes, then the student reads along three times. They practice their reading, they have a quiz, and then they have a retell that they have to write in five minutes of half page. And we come in as the teacher and we see each student, and we go over all of this information and have them read it to us, go over their questions in order for them to pass this one, and we give them feedback. So to show you a few slides on these, this is what the cold reading looks like. So we time them to that, and as you can see, the practice on the side there. And this is what happens when they come to their task for their class timing, and we calculate their errors, and we also give them a way to their expression of the information. This is part of the quiz. There are multiple choice questions, and then there are also written responses to exhibit which child will go with their response. And this is just the ending page where we scroll down and you can talk about each part in each child. Now, how do we determine if they're making progress with these interventions? We have the picture at the beginning. This is our progress monitoring book. So if you look at the big picture first, we always draw an aim line on the book. So we start with their beginning, DIBBLES Benchmark Score, and we draw it to the end. This has to be a secondary book. We would like to see them at 87 words by the end of the year. So every child's book will have an aim line, and then they will have data points on it. We like to progress monitor approximately every 10 days, so we get two data points for each line. Now, if the child is not making progress, we're seeing those dots below, it's been a while, we will change the intervention or the interventionist. What we would like to see happen is the child tests out, and they go back to Tier One. And how that happens is if you look on the bottom right side, beginning, middle, and ending have different benchmark requirements. So we look at the words permitted and the accuracy, mistakes, and if they can read at benchmark, whatever time of the year it is, and meet the words permitted and the accuracy three times consecutively, then they go back to Tier One. That's how we determine are they making progress. Any questions on that? Oh, yes, if they score within 10 words, we have what's called double students, and we just track those students each month and make sure that they're not getting way ahead.
With that being said, I'd like to go back to the RTII chart. And it's always our goal to return students to Tier One because they responded to the interventions that we have provided them. So I would like to share with you just one grade level, not to overwhelm you, I would like to share with you Grade One. At the beginning of the year, in Grade One, we had 38 students, or approximately 46%, of our first grade class in Tier Two, receiving interventions, which left 44 students in Tier One, 54%. These students have been through the Tier Two interventions, some in and out because it is flexible. At the mid-year, we now have 15 students in Tier Two receiving interventions. We have moved 23 students back to Tier One, thanks to the hard work of the faculty and the staff and the students at Bagley. So this shows that our system does work, and we are making very successful, and the students are doing a great job. Does anyone have any questions?
Purple folder, do the kids know?
No, that's.
Other class names know, the purple folder, you have one, you don't have one, that kind of thing. That was always a thing, you got called that class because you had to go to the media class, you know that.
And I can speak, I have son who goes to Bagley, and he, and I'm in this class lately, and he doesn't send me about from Florida. I don't mean nothing to him.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering more, is do they consume them, or is it just teachers?
It is the place where we house their attention.
Has everyone gone somewhere during this intervention practically? I mean, some kids may go to BAN, some kids may go to Gifted, some kids, I mean, everybody's moving somewhere. So there's no focus on.
You talk about first grade. Have all the grades had some movement, the way they should be moving from middle back to the Tier One?
Especially kindergarten. Well, some of you want to talk about kindergarten. At this point in the year, we don't have any students in Tier Two. Everybody is Tier One. And technically, they don't get placed in a purple folder, or with the purple folder, that's kind of how we say it, at the beginning of the year, but they're still getting interventions. We have really put a focus in K1 and 2 this year with consistent interventions, which means there's never a teacher that can be pulled, their intervention don't get canceled. So we have really placed a focus on that, and we are at a point at kindergarten where we don't have anybody getting Tier Two interventions. They are all being successful in the Core Program.
And when we did have major data come in, they did have students in Tier Two, but they went through the first 10 days, and then they go back to Tier One.
When do you guys work with these kids? When does it occur? When does a classroom teacher work with a kid? Actually, what?
When are the interventions?
You said there's interventionists, and there's classroom teachers involved, and there's classroom assistants. When does a classroom teacher do this?
Well, it's like Dr. Soltis said, we are all doing this at the same time during the day, so everybody's in a small group, even if you're, no matter where you fall. Like in this schedule, first grade has a block that is their skill group time. Yeah, third grade has a different block that is their skill group time. Yeah, so, and then that's when we bring the interventionists in as a team.
This is in addition to their regular learning. They are in the classroom during Storytown or True Reading, so they get this in addition to their instruction.
I was going to make a joke about West Virginia phonics.
We have a few teachers here to present new courses as well as new textbooks. So if we could start with Mr. Owens, who's our teacher leader in our technology department, and Mrs. Golden will pull up the PowerPoint. We talked about the project Lead the Way Grants that we have received at all buildings, at the Senior High, Junior High, as well as the elementary courses, or excuse me, elementary schools. And Mr. Owens is here to talk a little bit about those courses, and we're very excited.
And Mr. Owens is here to talk a little bit about those courses, and we're very excited.
We're scheduled this summer, the three teachers that are teaching it to go for more training, which I think is a positive. Teaching, you're never going to stop learning. I've found that out since I began. This will be my thirtieth year next year, and I think young teachers need to understand that coming in. So I'll spend two weeks avoiding getting more training. Our high school teacher will also spend two weeks, and our junior high teacher will spend three weeks getting training also. So I think that's a good thing. When we bring that back, it's going to help us present the material to the kids in a better manner. And I think we can all afford to improve in the classroom, no matter how good a teacher you might be. So this is the first grade eight course. So the thing I did with it, when I went through it, I highlighted in red the things that I felt were important. And I've been teaching that design process for a while now, trying to get the kids to think outside the box and think for themselves. Solving problems, we all do that as adults today. And the kids, some of them, I tell them to look around. Sometimes your classmates have good ideas also. You're not just learning from your teacher, you're learning from each other. So creativity, innovation, teamwork. I like that word, design, because this is going to incorporate more drafting into the classroom through Autodesk, which will be AutoCAD and engineer-invent software. So those are the key terms that I saw in that course description. And I think that's going to be a real positive in the eighth grade. The ninth grade course looks like this, and I did the same thing with it. We see the words design process, applying math, science, and engineering standards. The term hands-on projects, you know, I taught here at Lake Trop in nineteen eighty-seven, and it wasn't too far down the hall here, I was in a wood shop, and how times you change, you know? And Mr. Karazak for architecture, and it was T-square. So the kids look at me when I'm drawing lines in AutoCAD, and I'm like raving about it. They think I'm crazy, but I'm like, I remember those things and how far we've come. And I like the word individually in there, teams also, designing solutions, word problems. Three D modeling, this year the district and the community bought us three D printers. And they have two, three D Design, I think is the name of the software. And when you get in there and you start to work with it, it's challenging, but once you work with it a little bit, it really changes the way you look at things. And that, to me, is like CAD was with the T-square. That three D printer is going to change a lot of things. It does some amazing things, and I know I greatly appreciate the investment, and so does Mr. Glamp of the high school. An engineering notebook, I look at it, it describes the kids' ideas. They sit down, they do thumbnail sketches, they do asymmetric drawings, they present a CAD drawing with it. It looked almost like a science lab report to me, where the kids were taking down their thoughts and ideas and having to record it. And that's something I'm interested in learning about. I don't know whether the kids will be as excited as I am, but I think that's important, to be able to explain your idea to whoever it might be you're dealing with at that point in time. At the high school, we will be doing this with them, principles of engineering, engage, challenge. I think we already do that a lot. Mr. Glamp has committed, done a very nice job with the kids, whether it be through BOTS IQ or our drafting courses. He's done a very nice job with them. Mechanism, strength of structures. We do a lot of work with balsam wood, and the kids are building structures, whether it be a tower, a bridge. Materials, trying to change, trying to show the kids how to change materials. Balsam wood, getting them on bandsaws, explaining the different types of woods. Like I had a word, poplar this year, and I try to explain to kids the differences between poplar and oak, and the strength qualities, and how you can determine which is which. Automation, that would be our three D printer, which we already have, and CNC machine in our wood lab. Once again, some problem solving, research, design. We're doing a lot of these things now, but I think we can do them better. And I think that's where the training is really going to help us this summer. So I'll know more come summer.
We'll have you back, Mr. Brown.
Try to explain a little better what I did this evening, but I am excited. I think it's going to really improve our program. I did have an engineering notebook up there, but my daughter took home, and all I could do was get her links. I don't know if we can click on that. And this is from Project Lead the Way, and you can see the thumbnail sketch up on the right, and the students sketching the idea and trying to describe it in their own terms. And I think this is good. And then as it advances, as you can see, and you can continue down if you would, the drawings are done on CAD, and they get a little more complicated. They're describing sizes, materials, scale. This is all good things we need to see. So it's been amazing, the changes that I've seen, you know, in my career. It's just amazing to me what's happening right now in the world of education. Does anybody have any questions for you this evening?
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Social studies is up now.
We're going to have social studies come up. Julie, for our marker, and Mr. Major, who are teacher leaders from the junior high school. They're on the textbook and curriculum review cycle, and they're going to talk about why they chose the books that they did. And the exciting news is we're really moving to the online resources and online textbook versions for the social studies department next year.
Could you share your presentation? It is.
Yes.
I think being excited is a common theme, as Mr. Owens was saying. This is my first time participating in a new textbook selection, and I have to share with you just two comments that students have made. This year when they opened the book and they saw the first year that somebody had signed it out, they said, that's what I was born. And the other thing is, Mrs. Barker, somebody wrote my textbook in this thing called the cabinet. They wrote Homeland Security in here. I said, well, that's supposed to be in there, you know, when the book was published, I hadn't been created yet. So I'm very excited to get a new textbook. Look, Mr. Major and I went with McRobhilde textbooks. The seventh grade textbook is Discover World Geography. And the eighth grade textbook is Building Citizenship, Civics, and Economics. Both textbooks are honed for a lot. And probably one of the most exciting things about it is the amount of interactive resources that are available. And it is compatible on the Chromebooks that we are, you know, integrating into our classrooms and also through the Mathium boards. The students have online access, and a few years ago, when we purchased a ninth grade textbook, what the students did online was only viewable to the student. But now the books have been updated a little better, and as a student, they can create a portfolio. It is web-based, and as their teacher, I can also get in to see their work, monitor their progress, and provide feedback. So it's not just one reading where we can communicate with each other through that portfolio. There are so many components to these new textbooks that Mr. Major and I and a few of the other teachers are going to participate in some professional development opportunities with one of the textbook reps. There's just so much to unpack and unfold, and they're going to help us learn how to best use it and integrate it into our classrooms. We've gone through a bit and then looked at all of the resources that are there, but there is just so much.
This is my textbook, it's the green one, the World Geography. One of the biggest reasons why we chose this textbook from McRobhilde was the online resources. This book has everything from interactive maps that the kids can, you know, adapt and change depending on what we're talking about, to, like Mrs. Barker said, the online classroom. And if you look at the tabs across the top, I know they're tough to read. Like she said, with the online classroom, I can push out work to them, they can turn it into a link, we can collaborate. And this really goes in line with the technology initiative here in the seventh grade with our Chromebooks. And next year, we're going to try something new where we are going to issue online textbooks rather than carry around a paperback textbook. So it's kind of developing those 21st century skills, and they're going to have to get used to using their devices, especially in high school and on into college. So we're trying to prep them little bit by little bit, and starting with our textbook next year. So, does anybody have any questions for us? Oh, I'm sorry.
I don't know if you mentioned that we'll have one classroom set of books in the classroom, but every student will have online access. And McRobhilde's even great of having mobile components just from handheld device, creating apps, things like that. So they're pretty ahead of the game whenever we have compared it to some of the other vendors that we have looked at. This is just a screenshot of one of the eighth grade online pages. This one, you can just see down the left of all different types of resources. For example, the second item down, art, photos, slide shows, there are five hundred and eighty-eight different items to choose from. I think this is a good example as to why we're going to be receiving the professional development. I mean, between maps, quizzes, tests, other reference materials, it can take forever to go through. We'd rather just learn how to best use it rather than to sit there and surf through it.
If you wouldn't, you know, if you want to check this out, please feel free. There's the website, canadownbrowhill.com. Our username is Sample Teach. Password is M H E twenty fifteen S S. And if you have any questions, please feel free to contact myself, Julie, or Dr. Tepper. Anybody have any questions?
Is there a website we can check out for the other book too?
It's the same website. When you log in, you'll be able to access all of McRobhilde's social studies books, but ours are also in the mix.
Thank you. Now we have Christine Reese from our World Language, teacher leader of the World Language Department.
For AP Spanish, German, and French, the World Language Department is requesting to use Triángulo Aprobado Noia de Fingol. I had to write out phonetically, I wasn't sure how to say it, and Apremás. Each of these materials are provided by Wayside Publishing and have similar offerings and resources. Just like the social studies department, we're going to be purchasing a class set of each textbook, which would be kept in each classroom, as well as have access to the Super Site for all of its many online resources. In addition to having access to the online textbook, we'd also have available grammar and vocabulary activities, interpretive reading and listening, interpersonal writing and speaking, and downloadable audios that will provide hours of indispensable practice for the students. And every time students log in, they will be preparing for the AP exam with activities that are designed in the same style as AP tests. For French III and IV, the text En Parcant is more of a personal communication-focused material, which also offers an online textbook and the similar resources as the others that I mentioned, because it's also from Wayside. Finally, for Spanish IV, oh, actually, before, let me show you. These are some examples and screenshots from the online resources that Wayside offers. You can see here some of the visuals, including quizzes. Students can create their own flashcards and go through them. And it also offers authentic cultural resources and materials and other, you know, valuable resources. For Spanish IV, we're requesting to use Imagina, that's a hardback book, a text that is provided by Vista Higher Learning. The objective is to increase the scope and rigor of the course in conjunction with alignment with the new AP test. We'd like to, again, purchase a class set of this textbook, which would be kept in the classroom, as well as obtain Super Site access for all of its many online resources that are going in that more online direction. It offers authentic materials, high-impact literary and cultural readings, and an online V-text, they call it, which contains an interactive online textbook that links directly with the Super Site practice activities. And students will be able to have, for example, as you can see out there, live chat activities where they could record and submit simulated conversations and work with a partner online to record and submit an activity. So basically, for each of these textbooks, we're not just getting a hard textbook. We're also gaining the ability to use the online resources in and outside of the classroom. Any questions about any of those?
Thank you. And just we have Mr. Engel just doing a quick review on our dual enrollment courses that we've been talking about pursuing and what we will be offering.
Yes, I have a, my old thought was sophomore in college, I just filled out that passbook. If you've ever filled out the passbook or work, it's complicated, and then they tell you how much money you're owed. And so that makes me think about how much college, how expensive college is. And so that's why this next agreement that we just entered with WCCC is so important, because we just were able to secure a dual enrollment agreement with WCCC for the 2015-2016 school year. We've been able to add twenty courses to our dual enrollment collection. Not new courses, but in addition to the Penn Highlands and the Cedar Hill and the other five colleges that we have dual enrollment agreements with. Dr. Tepper and I met with one of the deans, Dr. Craig Santacola, the other day. He's approved those twenty courses. He's also approved our fourteen teachers to teach those courses, and we're working on a few more courses as well. The greatest thing about this whole opportunity is that it saves our students money. I just looked up today, three credit classes separate rockets around $1,200. And the courses that WCC is going to offer our students for a three-credit course, it's going to be $149. So you can see the savings, obviously. Right now, we have a total of twenty-eight courses that we offer in the high school. They're dual enrollment eligible, so students can sign up for those and get credit for those classes as well as earn credit towards graduation. So we're going to continue to grow this opportunity with WCCC and agreements that we have with our schools. That was brief. Any questions? Thank you.
Moving along, because of the weather closings that we have had in the past few days, we, that necessitates basic calendar changes, and that will be an agenda item for you for next week. The closing from Thursday to February the nineteenth, the makeup date will be Thursday, April the second, that's the Thursday before Easter. But it's on that payday day, which is no school for students only, the teachers will work for it. On Friday, makeup day for Friday, February twentieth, the school is closed, will be Wednesday, June third. School will be in session for both teachers and students. And on the closing day on Thursday, March the fifth, the makeup day will be Thursday, June fourth. And again, that will be the last day of instruction, and it's a half day. Wednesday, April first, 2015, will be an early dismissal and permission to apply for P V E, to P V E for an after-day day for Thursday, April the second. All that will be an agenda item.
You know, just to understand that the spring holiday for students on Wednesday, April first, would begin their spring holiday through and including Monday of the next week. For faculty, they will be in session in the afternoon of April first and April second for professional development. Just to understand that Thursday would be a makeup day from one of the snow days we have as in that payday day, which is permissible through the Department of Education.
At your seats this evening, you received also a proposed 2015-16 school calendar, and that will be an agenda item for approval for next week.
Just to note that the first day of school next year is Monday, August thirty-first for students.
Just to note that the first day of school next year is Monday, August 31st for students. It is Labor Day next year mainly because of the way Labor Day falls next year, I think it's the latest maybe it possibly can be. There will be three professional development days for teachers, the previous week, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, but just to note that start day, August 31st. Please look the calendar over at the U of U, that will be the agenda item for next week. Also, an agenda item will be to approve Westmore County Student Assistance Program Agreement for 2015-16 school year, and that's an annual thing. We will also be asked to approve supplemental contracts between Delphi Village and Greater Latrobe School District Business Associate Agreement and the Purchase of Service Agreement, which is a day treatment supplemental contract, and there are attachments A and B reagreed up close. That will be also on your agenda for approval next week. Also, we will now create all the wishes to enroll in the Dariago Cultural Program for the remainder of the 2014-15 school year, and that will be on your agenda next week for approval. And lastly, an agenda item to approve, approval to host a WC MEA Junior High Forest Festival on March 11th of 2016. And the next Curriculum Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, April 21st at 5:30 PM here in CSC prior to the regular board meeting. Thank you.
Mrs. Mayes?
Mrs. Elder, finance?
Yes. Thank you. We have the treasures report, new bills, and budgetary drinks for the middle of the week on our agenda next week, and I was going to ask you to keep.
I'm going out the side door to walk, so I have my standby record ready. Wait in the back room.
In addition to talking about the finance committee, where we have quite a number of things before us, he's also going to talk about the grants.
Yeah, next week, we'll ask the board for approval to accept a donation from a commercial banking trust in the amount of $500 for the school readiness program, or the, I'm sorry, the school readiness transition plan, and Mr. Prunkett, you know exactly what that is for those for the shirts.
Yes, we purchase Unwildcat Nella t-shirts for our kindergarteners, they love to wear them, it's like their welcome to the district. It used to be covered under our old transition plan grant that we took over. That money's gone by the wayside, but the commercial bank stepped up this year, gave us the cash, and we're all excited. The kids love the shirt.
So we'll ask for your approval on that at next week's meeting. What I want to do is review the finance committee meeting minutes, they are attached for your review. It's about four pages, I promise I will go through very quickly. Mr. Engel set the bar, I think, at three to five seconds, I don't know if I'll be able to meet that, I'm going to do my best.
You're always the third.
Yes. The first two items on the agenda are on the meeting minutes, are the E-Rate update, the Gadsden 45 services, I won't review that because we approved that last month's meeting, but I had it on the finance meeting agenda for March because we had canceled February's meeting. The third item that we reported on was the 2015-16 EWCTC budget proposal. Currently, and this is just preliminary budget, proposing a 4% increase, which is about $114,000. As we talked about before, Greater Latrobe sends the largest amount of students there, we make about 50% of that population, so our increase cost will be about $66,000. Of that 60, I'm sorry, of that initial $114,000, I just wanted to note that $90,000 is for Peasars Retirement. So if you hear us talk about it here at our school district, it's affecting everybody. The other thing that I wanted to note is Governor Wolf put out his new budget proposals, the CTCs are projected to get about $23 million more, so I think that could potentially impact your budget favorably for all descending school districts. I would like to note, though, that that is just a proposed budget, and it will be kicked around quite a bit between the House and the Senate, so while we're optimistic initially, that could definitely change over the next several months. So more to come on the CTC budget. We also talked about the WCTC HBAC replacement. They're considering replacing the HBA system at an estimated cost of over $600,000. The board will be asked tonight to approve, working with an engineering firm called Old Engineering Consultants, so that they can begin to, you know, put together the specifications and then go through the bidding process. So more information will come back on that to the joint area boards from the JSC, but you're being asked to approve the engineering group, so they can get the ball rolling on that. Pay plan discussions, we reminded the committee, and I want to remind the board, we have four pay plan agreements, all of which will expire July 1st, so we'll be coming forward with recommendations for the finance committee, which will then come forth to the full board as far as any adjustments or changes to those pay plans. Those are for our personal care assistants, our classroom assistants, our secretarial staff, our health and resistance, in-school suspension supervisors, and team attorneys. The next item on there is the van purchase, Mr. Millslake will be talking about that next. We're recommending the district purchase of 2015 Ford 10-passenger transit van through the CoSource program, so we will talk about that and hopefully get the board's blessing on that tonight. We'll be requesting to have the board act on that this evening, just because we've been talking about this for the last several months, and the existing van is going to be coming up for inspection in the end of April, and we want to get the ball rolling on this prior to that inspection meeting to be done. The next item is our 2015-16 budget, we did a preliminary budget presentation at the January meeting. At that time, we decided to adopt a resolution statement that we would operate within the index, with more to come. Governor Wolf did release his proposed budget. Right now, it looks very favorable to education. I just wanted to note that the increase in funding with the Greater Latrobe School District, based on these very, very, very preliminary numbers, would be $678,000 more than what, more than our actual 2014-15 allotment. It will actually be $939,000 more than what we budgeted, though. So if you recall, we did not account for the ready-to-learn block rate last year because we weren't 100% certain we were going to receive it, and if we did receive it, we knew that it was one-time laundry of earned money, and we didn't want to count on it. So that's really what makes up the difference between that $678,000 and that $939,000. But a breakdown of his proposed budget so far, the basic instructional subsidy, our basic debt money, is projected to increase by about $525,000, which is a 5% increase. Charter school reimbursement, which historically we received significant, about 27% of our costs were reimbursed, that had been $0. They're talking about reimbursing about $98,000 in funding for that. Our P A accountability block grant is being increased by about $101,000. Special education is looking to increase by about $178,000. They did remove that ready-to-learn block grant, so it's not included in his preliminary numbers. So as of right now, the numbers that we are looking to receive from the state in funding are looking very promising, but I just, again, wanted to stress, there's probably a lot of discussion that's going to occur at the state level, while we're hopeful we'll see an increase, we're not necessarily counting on this at this point in time, so more to come, I just wanted to put that out there to you. We also reviewed our expenditure, some expenditure line items at the meeting, and just the one that I wanted to highlight is that Wolf is proposing to put controls in place to reduce our charter school costs. We've talked before about how costly it is to the district when students choose to go to those charter schools. He's talking about putting caps in place so not to exceed tuition allowance, and then actually making them at the end of the school year reconcile their expenditures to the revenues, and any surplus that they have, reimburse those districts because of the surplus that they've been able to compile over the last several years that charter schools have become, you know, more and more relevant. So that's basically where we're at with the 2015-16 state budget. I'll come back at the main meeting to talk about the proposed final budget, so more to come on that. We also reviewed our 2015-16 athletic budget. We're looking at about a $53,000 increase to the athletic budget. $37,000 or 70% of those costs are for new programs, the four new programs that we've taken over, which, or that we've added, the junior high baseball, junior high softball, and the boys and girls lacrosse, so we had expected that by, you know, taking ownership of those programs. The 2015-16 service budget, we also reviewed, again, that program will once again be 100% self-sustaining. We're looking at a projected increase of about $45,000, about $30,000 of that is, again, for Peasars Retirement, which makes up about 60% of that increase. And then finally, our 2005 bond refinancing, things are still looking favorable, we're looking to move forward with that at the next Tuesday's meeting. They'll have their meeting and their bond sale on the 17th, and then come and present the results of that to the full board, and if they're, you know, in our favor, we will act as we want that. Okay? So that's all I have. Our next finance meeting is April 1st at 10:00 AM at the Administration Building. Does anybody have any questions on anything that's out over there? If you do, please don't hesitate to contact me. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Mrs. Kozar, I'm ready to black.
Thank you. I'm ready for the adoption resolution number 169, the purchase of the 2015 Ford 10-passenger transit van.
Second. It's been moved in second, because this was not, we usually vote on things on the second meeting, and we did not, so if there's any public comment or questions, you can come to the podium, bring us to our attention on this specific resolution. And if there's any comment, questions from the board.
Sorry, I just want to recap this. We went from buying a supply truck to, is that it?
A mailman.
A mailman to a passenger vehicle because we use something else for the mailman, this is going to benefit transporting kids around.
What we decided to do is move a mini boat, it's only seven passenger, and it's got 97, no, I mean, I'm sorry, a nose seven, with about 55,000 miles on it. We'll move it to run the mail. We went to the 10-pass because as Mark can tell you, he runs a large, that size van quite frequently to run teams to ballgames and things like that, so it's more useful for the district, it's a fair sized cost, more, when you figure $450 each time.
Yeah, what happened was it passed a law that you can't take 15-passenger vans anymore. So therefore, for example, this weekend, we had to rent two seven-passenger vans to send wrestlers to Hershey, tomorrow, we sent two seven-passenger vans to send swimmers to, but now, that's $1,600 just for those two trips. If we'd have had this van, we'd have sent them to the coach in a car, we'd have saved $1,600 just right there in two weeks. It'll pay for itself probably in two years.
I just wanted to very obviously, it's very public, we should review, because it sounds like a win.
That doesn't, that doesn't involve, I mean, it'll pay for itself in two years.
Thank you.
Any other further comments or questions? I'm moved to the adoption, I mean, I have a little bit for the.
All those.
All in favor of resolution number 169 stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passage unanimous.
And we actually not having a proper meeting this month, so this is April 2nd. A quick change, April 2nd, we are next to the central office at 3:00.
Student activities and recreation. An agenda item for next week will be approving Excel Health's five-year athletic trainer contract. We authorize the Greater Latrobe School District to provide a $15,000 match to be used for a Latrobe, for a Latrobe, Greater Latrobe School District Parks and Recreation, DCNR grant application, is to renovate St. Clair Park, party that's owned by the school district. And Mr. Mayes, do you have a winter sports update?
Yeah, I'll do that in conjunction with the minutes of the committee meeting. It'll probably be the first time I've ever spoke shorter than Mr. Watson. Probably be the last time.
Hasn't happened yet.
Yeah. The winter sports update, most seasons have completed. Once again, the second year in a row, all four winter sports team went to the playoffs, that's never been done before. The swimmers are on their way tomorrow, or Wednesday, the five swimmers to the state championships. The wrestlers have just returned home, the five wrestlers at the state championships, four of whom placed in the top four, and that's never been done before. And one little guy in the lineup will wrestle Sunday in the All-Star match down in Pittsburgh, at about 285 pounds against the Illinois State Champion, and it happens to be my son, so he gets that from me, the 285, not the. We did have our Athletic Committee February 16th meeting, and we talked about a lot of topics, the minutes are attached in your computer. It started with the Unity Township and Greensburg Y M C partnership proposal, it was entertained and has been brought to the full board, I know your discussions are continuing on that. We listed the two proposals, UPMC and Excel Health and Training Services to the school district, and you see the recommendation here before you this evening from that. Mrs. Swiger has explained the DCNR grant match, which was brought to us, and there will be an event coordinator adjustment that I will explain. As you know, we have an event coordinator for $4,000 a season, and we're going to switch that, we're still taking $12,000, go $6,000 for the fall, and $6,000 for the spring, and Mr. Lucassio, the principals and I, will cover the high school in the wintertime. It's just so busy with the complex, it's so many hours, that it needs to be divided up differently. It really has changed the whole job function, so in fairness, that's probably the right way to do it. And then we have personnel discussions on some positions that are ongoing, and you'll be updated on either tonight or the next executive session, and then there was just a little discussion. And our next meeting will be, oh, the sports recognition night will be Wednesday, April 1st at 7:00 PM in the auditorium. And that's it, and I know I'm a shorter man.
Thank you, Mark. Community relations, Dr. George.
Hi, how are you, Portman? I just want to recognize the question that said about here tonight, about the athletic trainer, that's Dr. Masterson, who's going to be the head honcho, charmer, and for a trainer, and Mr. Onat, and I'm sorry, I don't remember you. And we proved the contract, I was talking about these are the folks we've been dealing with, to welcome you aboard, and thanks for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
Didn't have to ask you anything, so that's good. And sadly, I don't have any reports of that.
Thank you. Mrs. Mayes, was one of the meeting minutes?
Yes. The summary of the board meeting minutes from February 24th is attached, and we also had a special board meeting on March 3rd to discuss the COVID situation, and that's also attached. Our next meeting, other than tonight, is scheduled for Tuesday, March 24th at 7:30 in the WIU board.
Mrs. Kozar?
Yes. Yes, I have another asking you to approve the adoption of resolution number 170, to approve the EWCTC capital projects funding, this is the hiring of old, old engineering consultants on the HBAC project at EWCTC.
It's confirmed in second, same thing as before, because this was not on the, we didn't have a chance to discuss before, any public comment or question, or any board comment or question on this resolution. See, and I will have a roll call level for this resolution. Mrs. Elder?
Yes.
Mr. Robser?
Yes.
Mrs. Kozar?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayes?
Yes.
Mr. Music?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Dr. George?
Yes.
Dr. Lock.
Yes.
Passage unanimously eight zero. Thank you.
Our next, the minutes from our previous meeting are attached on your agenda, and our next joint operating committee meeting will be Wednesday, March 25th at 7:00 AM at EWCTC.
Thank you. We will have the second meeting or adoption of a list of four policy things we see for you on our agenda next week, and then there is another list, which will be approved for clear screening next week. And as you will remember, these persons have been doing changes in the law that occurred at the beginning of this year, and they will be on your agenda next week as well. And in the guise of one PSBA liaison. And in the guise of PSBA liaison, I'd like to urge all board members to pay attention to the daily communication you get from PSBA because it's all about Wolf's proposal, what various newspapers around the state are saying, what various legislators are saying. And it's very interesting, and will provide a lot of background. And we would remind you that the legislature is supposed to approve a budget before we approve our budget. So we'll see. That's the end of my report. Thank you. Mrs. Elder, Mr. Niedt, transportation?
Oh, thank you.
I want to ask Mr. Mears to do a brief... She's a pressure that we're all in, and it's crazy. Literally, or...
Yeah. Well, we just want to do, you know, basically thank you, and shame the supervisors left because the thank you need township, you know, for their help this winter. I don't think you realize till you get a winter like this, how many times I'm on the phone with those guys at 4 o'clock in the morning, yeah, they're telling me if salt's working, not working, you know, what they feel. And it's a lot of hours, and I know they say it's their job, and it is, I guess, it's my job. But, you know, they, we called them one time, we had a bus hung up charter road, and went straight out and saw them, and they weren't even at work yet. Then went along, worked at Ford Park, went out, grabbed a truck, installed a force charter road. You know, they're there all the time if you need them with the snow and the ice, and it makes our job a lot easier. I know Mr. Prunkett got to experience firsthand himself. Last thing I told him before I went to Hershey, look, I turned the inns over, don't close school. I was at Hershey for 12 hours at school, it was close.
He paid for me.
He paid, he pulled like a cheap hat in the store. That's it, that's it, my report. We're just sitting on this, jazz kid and Mike.
The solicitor straight back from the right. Tell me, Mears does, I don't need that, that's true. Mears looked at the reporter and said, I don't need none of that.
Mr. Palmer, technology?
Thank you, Blackwater. And after the voting, may have been April 14th, 2015, here at 6:00 PM. Notable.
Superintendent's recommendations. Several personnel items to be voted on next week. One is the resignation of Luann Mills, who would be presently the girls' head basketball coach. Also, appoint a substitute personal care assistant, Patricia Campbell. And lastly, under personnel, ask the board to create a confidential secretarial position to support the process of implementation of centralized registration within the district, which the position would not actually begin until July 1st of 2015. Under other business, all of the items listed, as you probably are aware, the musical is this weekend, and I love how Mrs. Allsous put the last call for tickets, literally.
I'm going to send them back so they can sell them.
So anyhow, if you didn't get tickets for Friday or Saturday night and have an interest, please see Mrs. Allsous before you leave this evening. This Thursday, this Thursday, no, next Thursday, March 19th, the Department of Champions, last month, moved three times, I wasn't sure which day it was, but hopefully this month there is no snow that we need to deal with for late starts. Also, at Mrs. Fields from Bagley Elementary School is having, is hosting the Westmore County Sixth Grade Football Festival, and it will be Friday, March 20th at 7:00 PM here at the senior high school auditorium. If you'd like to come and attend, I know she would be extremely honored to have all of you there. She has put a lot of work, as well as the other members of the music department, if you can be there, I know she would be honored. Also, senior high school concert choir, Chamber Choir is having a concert at the Holy Family Church in Latrobe on Sunday, March 22nd, which is always an event if you're able to attend. The people who are will have the talent that is in both of those, or both of those groups. The EWCTC meeting, as Mrs. Kozar mentioned, is Wednesday, March 25th. Mrs. Allsous gave all of you the statement of financial interest that are due May 1st, if you could have those back as soon as possible. Board meeting dates, we have a meeting next Tuesday for our regular board meeting at 7:30, and then the meetings in April, and the spring board retreat for May 6th, Wednesday at 5:00 PM at LES. Hopefully, you all have that marked down, so you're reserving that date. Thank you.
Don't forget to do the superintendent evaluations, get those turned in. And then we will be having an executive session after this meeting. I was remiss in that we did have an executive session at 6:30 before this board meeting, so I'd like to add that.